Well, welcome everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order for July 11th. If you could please rise for the pledge of allegiance and we have our Boy Scout troop, six fifty-one today, to lead us in that today.
colored art, attention, colored art for march. colored art opposed to colors. if we, if you're a part of the group, otherwise right hand over the heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we do have an invocation this evening from Tracy Moss with North Coast Church.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let us pray. Gracious Father, we thank you for the privilege to gather freely as a council and community tonight. Thank you for the San Marcos citizens and organizations that are being recognized for their outstanding involvement in our community. We pray that you bless them in future local endeavors. Thank you, Lord, for these civil servants for their hard work and sacrifice for the betterment of this city. May you give each of them wise and discerning hearts to skillfully govern the people of San Marcos. As they work through these resolutions and reports, confirm and adopt tonight's items, please give the mayor, council members and staff great wisdom as they steward resources and lead our community. It's in your great name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Okay, and if the council could join me down in front, please. Council member Musker, you will.
For the record, Madam Mayor, everyone is present.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming tonight. In early 2021, we started a ceremony and awards process in town. We call it the Smile Award. It's the San Marcos Inspiration, Leadership and Excellence. And every two months, council members rotate the position to identify a member of our community or an organization who provide that inspiration and leadership and excellence for the citizens of San Marcos. And it can be a resident, a business, there has to be some connection to San Marcos. And this is my month to identify who I believe epitomizes that spirit of excellence and leadership. And do I have any veterans in the crowd tonight beside myself? Thank you, sir. Both of you gentlemen, thank you. So Mia Roseberry, would you mind coming on up? I'm going to embarrass her. I've known Mia for a few years now. You can stand right next to me if you like. So Mia Roseberry and her husband Steve are the co-founders of Wounded Warrior Homes, a San Marcos-based California 501(c)(3) nonprofit, whose mission is to provide transitional housing and reintegrative support services to recently separated veterans with service-connected disabilities and prioritizes veterans with combat-related disabilities and severe financial crisis. Wounded Warrior Homes helps homeless veterans get off the street and rehabilitated into a healthy lifestyle. Through their food pantry, counseling services, partnership with animal meals, and rehabilitative services, they help more than 500 veterans annually. Mia's background is in special education with an emphasis in moderate to severe disabilities. She worked for many years as a special education teacher in Vista before establishing Wounded Warrior Homes in 2009 and their business offices on Linda Vista, right over by one of our major shopping centers. Mia has postgraduate education and certificates in nonprofit management and planned giving and interpersonal communications for fundraising and developing major gifts. Mia is also co-owner of a home inspection service with her husband Steve, and she's active in the community as a member of the Military and Veterans Advisory Council of San Diego, the San Diego Veterans Coalition, and an active member of the Oceanside, Vista, Carlsbad, and San Marcos Chambers of Commerce, and the North San Diego Business Chamber. She is a fourth-generation descendant of U.S. Marines, and she is humble and will not tell you, but she is also a veteran of the United States Navy. So with that, Mia, the San Marcos Inspiration, Leadership, and Excellence Award for her ongoing rehabilitative services to our community in San Marcos. Mia is being honored for her compassionate efforts to administer transitional housing and reintegrative services to disabled veterans in addition to her active membership in multiple veteran and chamber groups. Please join me in congratulating Mia for being the July 2023 recipient. You have the floor.
I just wanted to thank everyone, the City Council, the mayor, and the community, because we couldn't do what we do without all of you. Our pantry is the number one way that we support our community besides our transitional housing. And we had another wonderful delivery of food today from a local community member, and I think she brought in close to 200 pounds of peanut butter, which doesn't sound like much, but peanut butter is the one thing we go through the quickest because it's the longest-lasting protein, so it's shelf-stable. And our pantry is open to any veteran in the community. And I just want to say thank you. And if anyone would ever like to come take a tour or learn more about our organization, please feel free to look us up online, woundedwarriorhomes.org. And if you're a golfer or a local businessperson who would like to participate, we have a golf tournament on September 18th. Thank you.
So that golf tournament is Shadow Age Country Club in Vista, and the proceeds go back to Wounded Warrior Homes to support this very, very worthwhile organization. Thank you, Mia, very much.
Thank you.
Senator Brian Jones also sent, no relation to me, a certificate of her Mia. Anyway, so next up, we have a certificate of recognition for, where is it? Preston Brown. Preston. So I'm going to tell a little bit about why we're recognizing him. And I would love for him to speak because he is really remarkable and he's very well-spoken. So anyway, the San Marcos City Council does hereby present Preston Brown with an honorable certificate of recognition for his commitment to the principles of Eagle Scout. He has shown unwavering courage, confidence, and character, and his dedication is an inspiration to all of us. So if you could tell us a little bit about your Eagle project, that would be great.
Of course. Thank you guys very much for inviting me here tonight. So my Eagle Scout project was a military memorial wall. It was a four-by-eight wall, and it was, had a black granite slab on the front of it with sandblasting that had the five military emblems of the time that I built it, and also a quote from Abraham Lincoln that honors not only the veterans who serve our country, both past, current, and future, but also the people back home here who are helping them while they're out of our home, keeping us safe. So the wall was meant to honor all the people in the military and all the people who have helped the military in the past, whether it be sending care for them or helping finance them. It's just, it's amazing that there's so many great people willing to protect our country. So that was the purpose of this wall, to honor them. And so I would like to appreciate all of you guys because you did great for our country. So, thank you guys very much. I would like to also give quite a few special thanks because this wall was not possible to be done by one person. I needed a lot of help from my parents. They helped drive me because they taught me valuable lessons in hard work and driving. And getting to Eagle Scout, it takes a lot of work. Takes a lot of work. Because you don't start at Eagle Scout, you work all the way up there and then you finish out with a project. So it took a lot of help from you guys, and I appreciate you guys so much. I would also like to thank my troop for coming here tonight. Oh, yeah, we need to clap for you guys. Let me clap for you guys. I would also like to thank my troop for coming out here tonight because they didn't have to come here. We actually have a meeting in an hour, and so they could have spent this time getting ready or doing something else, but they came out here tonight to support me. So I'd also like to thank you guys for all the support you have given me throughout the years. And then the last people I would like to thank is the San Marcos City and Ms. Mayor Rebecca Jones, Ms. Deputy Mayor Sharon Jenkins, and also all of you guys. Because this city has worked so hard to help our youth with school, they've helped our youth in scouts, and they've helped make our city a better place, and they've improved it greatly. And so I very much appreciate you guys as well.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And wait, aren't you one of the youngest Eagle Scouts in your troop?
I don't, I don't know. There might have been people before me who were younger. But I think the more important part about it is not the age that when you earn it, but the way you earn it and the things you learn on the journey to earning the Eagle Scout. Because you learn a lot of important lessons earning the rank, and these lessons carry on throughout their life. So whether you're seventeen and a half, or you're fourteen or fifteen, the fact that someone earns Eagle is just amazing because of the amount of work it takes to go in there. So I think it's, I think it's an amazing experience.
Aw, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. As I said, he's not shy at all.
One last thing. The wall is located in the Escondido Moose Lodge. It's open all the time. You guys can go down there and check it out. And it's just sitting right out there when you drive in. So, yeah. Thank you guys very much for having us here tonight. I very much appreciate it. And thank you, Ms. Mayor Rebecca Jones.
You're welcome. Thank you. And then we have, oh, there's Jared. I was like, wait, where is he? I didn't see you there. Jared, come on down. So Jared is the Youth of the Year, but he also was Youth of the Year for the county, correct?
Yes.
Yes. So that's pretty exciting, right here from San Marcos. So we wanted to recognize you and we're really excited. I haven't seen you in a while.
It's been, yeah.
You've grown up a bit.
A little bit.
Really, in like a year. I can't, I don't even think it's been a year. Anyway, the San Marcos City Council does hereby present Jared Diaz Barrios with an honorable certificate of recognition for being one of the most active youth leaders in our community. He was named San Diego County Youth of the Year by the Boys and Girls Club for helping serve 500 meals a day, fundraising, and tutoring. We invite all citizens to join us in commending Jared for his dedication to the community. And Jared, if you want to say just a few words about all the things that you've learned over this time, that would be great.
I'd love to.
If you don't mind, thanks.
So yeah, my name is Jared Diaz. I've been able to do a lot for our community, but definitely not as much as the community has been able to do for me. Obviously, right there, Boys and Girls Club has given me a pretty big check for my college expenses, which I'm about to go off to. But that's a little bit of money compared to how much they've given me in experience. I wouldn't be the person I am today without them. Growing up, it was a little challenging. It feels like maybe you don't always have opportunities, but they gave me so many opportunities, I can't even take advantage of them all the time. It's step by step. But I really appreciate the community and everything that's done. I appreciate every single one of you for building the community into what it is today and making sure that everyone has an opportunity to succeed. Thank you.
Okay, the next one is a proclamation, and we're going to have one of our staff come up and Erin Remreed come up. But one of the things I appreciate most about our community, sorry, you can come up, is our parks. And so this is Parks Make Life Better Month. So we wanted to definitely talk a little bit about our parks, and then I'm going to give you this, but I'm going to read it real quick because you might not know all of the benefits about parks. So anyway, the San Marcos City Council hereby recognizes Parks Make Life Better Month. Whereas Parks and Rec is an integral part of communities throughout the country, including the city of San Marcos, and supports the economic vitality of communities by partnering with local businesses and nonprofits and offering events for residents' engagement. And Parks and Recreation promotes physical, emotional, and mental health and wellness of people who live near and utilize parks, trails, open spaces, and facilities. Our parks and natural recreation areas ensure that the ecological beauty of our community provides a place for people of all ages to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. Parks and Recreation creates memorable experiences through youth sport and enrichment activities. Senior activity centers, yeah, we don't want to call them seniors, are further along folks, I guess. Adult fitness and enrichment programs, free community events, and so much more. Parks and Recreation fosters social cohesiveness in communities by celebrating diversity, providing spaces to come together peacefully, modeling compassion, promoting social equity, connecting social networks, and ensuring all people have access to its benefits. Parks and Recreation supports safe, vibrant, attractive, progressive communities that make life better through positive alternatives offered in their recreational opportunities. The California Park and Recreation Society has released a statewide public awareness campaign, Parks Make Life Better, to inform citizens of the many benefits of utilizing parks, facilities, programs, and services. So today, we are here to July 11th to honor the Parks Make Life Better, July of 2023. And, you know, we really, I think, saw a lot of what the benefits were during the pandemic and the way that people utilized our parks and our trails. We have about 72 miles of trails, a lot of parks, and we really are so, and we actually have some of our Parks and Recreational people here, so hopefully you'll recognize them too. And anyway, so I want to present this to you and then talk a little bit about our little thing we have going on for Parks and Rec Month.
Hello, my name is Erin Remreed. I am one of the staff members who works in Parks and Recreation. So to celebrate Parks Make Life Better Month, we are doing a free scavenger hunt. It's been promoted on social media, but there will be park signs out in eight of our parks. And so you can go to each park and find these and mark it off. There's no requirement of how many parks you need to go to. We're just trying to get people out there enjoying our beautiful parks and facilities. So we just are hoping that people go out there. We have playing cards that are front and back, English and Spanish. And if you're out in a park and you don't have a playing card yet, we have a QR code down here. You can scan and print it or download it on your phone. And we're just hoping people get out there. And if they do go to a park or multiple parks, we encourage them to bring these playing cards back to the community center, and then they'll earn a little prize bag with some goodies in it. And we have our first, my little brother Ryland was our first participant. He's very excited to be here today. Yes, and we're just excited to get everyone out there this month. He already got it. Do you want to tell him what you got?
I got sunglasses, a free pass to a pool choice, Las Poses or Woodland Park, also a mini key to the city, but it doesn't really work. And some bubbles. Also a free kids' certificate for a kid's mail at Canes.
Yes. Oh, wow. That's very cool. Well, congratulations. You need to be on our picture for sure. I actually saw, I went on a hike on Saturday, last Saturday, and I saw the one at Discovery.
Oh.
Yeah, it was right there. I think it was a bird, maybe.
It's a fish at Discovery.
Fish. Oh, a fish. Okay. I was hot and sweaty by the way. Oh, sure. Yep.
Oh, this one? Oh, yeah. I'll hold that too. Yeah.
English and Spanish. That's so cool. Whoopsie. Uh-oh. All right, this is why I forgot to do the roll call. But we do have some folks here also from Parks and Recreation. If you could stand up for our commission. Yes? Oh, I'm sorry, Friends of San Marcos Parks. Sorry. And you know what? Thank you. Because they actually do a lot of fundraising, and they just recently helped us rebuild our dog park over there off of Montiel Road. So we appreciate all that you do. But if you could stand and be recognized, that'd be great. You help make our parks better. Trust me, we couldn't do anything about our volunteers, without our volunteers in the community, truly. Anyway, okay, we can go ahead. Oh, sure, we can get a picture with Boy Scouts real quick. They want one. Don't we?
They're all tall.
We'll go that way.
Okay, well, I'm going to have to be in front here then, too.
Okay, we will be now moving on to the consent calendar. Are there any items that any council members wish to pull?
Move to approve tonight's consent calendar?
Second. Okay, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any noes? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to oral communications, we have one speaker, Marlene Walder. Come on down. Oh, sorry, Marlene, I forgot to push up back.
Okay. Madam Mayor, City Council members, and audience, who's hardly here. I'm here today to talk about something that really is in the past, but I'm still annoyed and want to air my annoyance. And that is, last year, when you approved the rent raise to our mobile home park, they promised to do something about the pool and the decking, as well as the jacuzzi. And the jacuzzi has been out of commission since last December, and it still is. And they say, oh, we have it on back order. The windows, oh, we haven't got them yet, so we can't do anything about yours because we're only having the guy come out once. And that was to be taken care of four or five years ago already. But COVID came along, and they hadn't ordered the windows, and now supposedly they're still on back order, or maybe it got lost in the shuffle. The other thing is the streets, the holes they dug for electric. Instead of doing all the electric or fixing the electric, they dug the streets up, and they've been dug up for four months or five months with three holes as you drive down the block. And I just guess my COLA went up on my retirement, 5%, but Social Security went up, and rents, as you know, went up more than 5% all over the place. But ours went up 6%. But our electric and our gas have gone up way over that 5%, and none of that covers what you get in Social Security or in a COLA. Thank you.
Thank you, Marlene. Okay, and we can't speak to that because it's not an agendized item. So moving on to public hearings, Resolution 2023-9182, confirming the diagram and assessment and providing for the levy of the annual assessment of the Landscape and Lighting District Number One for fiscal year 22, or sorry, 2324. Did you have, Owen? Isaac, it's great to see you here this evening. We have Isaac here as acting city manager this evening. Do you have any, any words of wisdom on this? Probably limited, I'm imagining.
Yes, this is an item that comes before city council annually in advance of assessing the assessment. That goes out to the tax collector at the county level, and so this comes before you to pay for services related to landscape maintenance within the right-of-way, as well as lighting.
Okay. And this is a public hearing. Do we have any speakers this evening? Okay, I would move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any further comments or questions of staff? No? Do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Okay.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, no noes? All right, moving on to item number nine, Resolution 2023-9183, confirming the diagram and assessment and providing for the levy of the annual assessment of the Landscape and Lighting District Number One for fiscal year 2324. Did you have, Owen? Isaac, it's great to see you here this evening. We have Isaac here as acting city manager this evening. Do you have any, any words of wisdom on this? Probably limited, I'm imagining.
Yes, this is an item that comes before city council annually in advance of assessing the assessment. That goes out to the tax collector at the county level, and so this comes before you to pay for services related to landscape maintenance within the right-of-way, as well as lighting.
Okay. And this is a public hearing. Do we have any speakers this evening? Okay, I would move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any further comments or questions of staff? No? Do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Okay.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, no noes? All right, moving on to item number nine, Resolution 2023-9183, confirming the diagram and assessment and providing for the levy of the annual assessment of Vallesitos Town Center Street Maintenance District for fiscal year 2324. And that is the annual, again, assessment for the property that is over where Nordall Marketplaces, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Any other discussion on that or anything?
No, very similar to the last item.
Right, okay. Any discussion or questions on this? Nope.
Move to close the public hearing.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any noes? Okay. I would move-
We adopt the resolution.
Second it. We have no further discussion, correct, from any council members? No? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve as is, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any noes? Okay, seeing none, that is unanimous as well. Oral communications, I didn't see any further, okay. And then reports, Sandeg, we meet on Friday. League of California Cities, Councilmember Musgrove.
We are dark, we meet next month.
Okay. North County Transit District.
We meet next week, I think it is.
Okay. And North County Dispatch Joint Powers Authority, Councilmember Neen, yes?
Our next meeting is August 23rd.
Okay. Clean Energy Alliance, Councilmember-
I do have a report, Mayor.
Oh.
Okay, so last, last June, AB 205 was passed by the House, or rather, the Assembly and the Senate, and signed by the governor. And what it does is it directs the three primary utilities in the state, SDGNE, PGNE, and SoCal Edison, to provide a tiered system, minimum of three tiers, for minimum monthly charges, fixed charges. And that is to be based on income level for the household. So the way it works out is based on household income levels for all who pay taxes, and those taxes are going to be, those numbers will be provided by the Franchise Tax Board. So like in my case, my wife and I live in our house, we have an adult daughter, she pays taxes, all that money comes into play. So the Franchise Tax Board will distill the dollars down based on the address. And so what they're doing is the fixed charge, if you make up to $28,000 a year, which interestingly enough is, if you work full-time, that's $14 an hour, so it's below minimum wage, you'll have a fixed charge of 24 cents a month. That's in addition to what you'll pay for your utilities. $28,000 to $69,000 is $34, $69,000 to $180,000 is $73 a month. And if you make 180 or more, you'll pay a minimum flat charge of 128 per month. They are changing the utility rate from 47 cents per kilowatt hour to 27 cents per kilowatt hour to offer some relief, but we did the math that you have to be a pretty extensive user to break even on that. There'll be some relief for existing solar customers, but they're still going to be subject to the minimum charges. Bill was sponsored in the Assembly Budget Committee, spearheaded by Assemblymember Tang from San Francisco, and in the Senate by Nancy Skinner from Berkeley. And for those who pay attention, our local representatives voted yes, Assemblymember Mangchine, and no, Senator Jones, no relation. And the board agreed to contract with Bay Shore Consulting Group to solicit applications for a full-time CEO. We've been using a contracted CEO up to this point, so a full-time CEO, secretary, and there's a, the state has a CCA, it's the, it's the Association for all the alliances within the state, and we need a consultant to work with them as a group, and we approved our 2324 budget. No further.
I had a quick question on that.
Yes, ma'am.
So on the kilowatt hours, so that went down to, what did you say, 20-something cents per kilowatt hour?
From 47 to 27.
So the incentive for folks that are making minimum wage or under, there was, there was a second tier, under the second tier, there is really no incentive for them to actually cut back on electricity. There's actually an incentive for them to potentially use more electricity, correct?
They're going to pay, well, I guess it depends on the 20 cent per kilowatt hour differential, if it equates to less than 34, if that's the second tier, $34 a month, then they can decide, well, if I'm, if I'm paying more than $34 a month now, at 27 versus 47, how much more electricity can I use to effectively not see an increase?
Right.
But I don't, I don't think the average consumer really looks at it that way, and then it's going to change month to month if you have a gas heater, electric heater, air conditioning, whole-house fans.
Yep.
Fans, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Very difficult to sort through. We're all going to see a raise, no matter where you are in the spectrum. And the whole, the whole point, and the basis for this, was to provide relief for those on lower income, so those who can't afford will pay more into it to lower the cost for those who can ill afford it, although they are still going to be assessed a monthly minimum charge.
Okay. All right, city council business visits. I think you, Councilmember Musgrove and Councilmember Sonella went on one, correct?
We had a great one.
Okay. So there's some, there's some photos there, and so this is just another fascinating company in our, in our city that I didn't know about, and probably drove past it hundreds of times over, over the decades that I've lived here. We visited Go Green Agriculture, they're off of Twin Oaks Valley Road, right, right next to Twin Oaks Elementary School. It was founded in 2009 by Pierre Junior while he was studying computer science at UC Riverside. He got his kind of innovative nature and was inspired by his dad, who was an entrepreneur, and also was actually a professor conducting hydroponic research for NASA, believe it or not. So you have this whole innovative process for growing lettuce, and they were originally in Encinitas, and then they moved to San Marcos and moved all their, and kind of condensed all of their operations here in, in our city, and they employ about 25 people currently. The company is committed to reinventing agriculture by making food safer, higher quality, more sustainable, and more accessible to all. And Go Green builds and operates high-tech greenhouses, as you saw in those photos there, with the purpose of providing local communities with fresh, sustainable, leafy greens. By using hydroponic technology, the company is able to minimize exposure to foodborne illnesses and derive from traditional growing techniques in the leafy greens. And their product offerings are currently, they're, they're green and red butter lettuce, which I had a chance to taste some of it last night, it was delicious, very fresh, romaine, and then watercress, which is something I hadn't had before, but it's kind of a peppery, almost like an arugula, and it's really good. I actually put a little bit of that on my, on my cheeseburger last night, so it was delicious. And then, kind of their, you know, they, they want to, they want to continue to grow, but they have some very large customers already. If you, if you buy your lettuce, especially your butter lettuce, and they used to provide the Caesar salad kits to Costco, so if you, if you buy any lettuce products from Costco, it's a good chance it's coming from them. They also do business with Whole Foods, Gelson's Grocery, Albertson's, and Safeway. And do you want to take page two?
Sure. They, they also work with some of our local distributors, like Jimbo's, Fraser Farms, Lazy Acres. They start with this fantastic machine that starts with a seed, and I can't remember what they called it, a little plug, but it's, it's cylindrical, but it's about the size of a golf ball, and it inserts a seed in there. And, oh, that's right, they called it sushi.
Sushi, yeah.
Because it looks like a sushi, it has a biodegradable paper wrap, and it goes in different stages, those, there's a machine right there. And when you saw the picture in the greenhouse, they have different points in time, so they mark when the seedling started, and as it progresses, and they move forward in the process, they can see how long it takes. And from the time it goes in the dirt to the time it's going to the market is probably about six weeks. It's pretty impressive. And they have them separated out, they do a fantastic job, completely organic, so they don't use any chemicals for pest control. They use, they called it the Coca-Cola recipe because it's a, it's a combination of naturally occurring items that you would, like lemon juice, things like that. And in the combination, they know what, what insects will be attracted to the, to the products, so they spray them periodically, doesn't hurt the plants, and they have a special nutritional, again, organic supplement to the soil. We had to wear hairnets to go into the greenhouse. It was, it was really interesting, it was a huge education. I estimated the greenhouse is about two acres, maybe a little bit more than that. And if you go north on Twin Oaks by the elementary school, they're at 2075 across from Hanson's power supply. They do tractors and lawn mowers. So it's just before you get to Buena Creek area. Really neat. Romero is the site manager, fantastic guy, great sense of humor. We got to meet quite a few of the staff there, they were just extremely helpful, you can tell they love working there. Their packaging capabilities allow swapping of labels to provide direct-to-consumer marketing for any retailer, so some of the companies want more than just what they would put on, they want a special label, so they'll do all that for them. They're shifting their business model to focus on serving localized supply chains, and they also oversee their own distribution. They had a box truck, and they go out every day and deliver as far as up into Los Angeles County. Go Green's a very innovative company, doing exciting things in the agricultural sector, and they're a great addition to San Marcos. And one of the things, they, they did have some distributions with Costco, and Costco helped them develop their business, but at a particular point, they didn't sever the business relationship, but it helped Go Green realize that there's a better market for them on a smaller scale, scale, but with multiple operations, it allows for greater flexibility. So if one of the smaller stores drops out, it's not a huge impact to their operation, but they are just a fantastic place. Very, very surprising. You drive out by there, you'll see the greenhouses off to the side and not know what's in there, but they do everything, start to finish, in there.
Well, I've definitely bought that before.
Yeah, I think you can still get it at Costco. And Ed and I, you know, it was really hot in the Twin Oaks Valley yesterday, and we were in a greenhouse, so we, we texted each other and said, hey, no ties and no coats. And so that's why we're a little bit more casual than usual there.
I would have opted for the ugly Hawaiian shirt and shorts, but I would have been voted down on that one.
Okay. Yeah, well, yeah, we have a lot of really cool businesses here in the city that we don't even know about. Okay, moving on to Isaac, our San Marcos Creek project. What are we looking at here, Isaac?
So we're currently working on a lot of habitat restoration. This picture that you see in front of you right now shows the habitat restoration over by Pacific, fully planted, so this is going to all grow in and be a new lush repairing area for the creek habitat. Then also here, we have a picture looking kind of south towards Bent as well, southeast-ish. They're preparing the soil, there's a very specific kind of mix that has to be dealt with in this area to make sure it's plantable for this type of habitat, and so the crews are really working full bore on the habitat restoration. About 70 acres of it occurring, about a mile and a half of the creek is going to be restored, and so these efforts are ongoing now, now that things have dried out, we're past all the rains, it's a perfect time to plant and let everything establish for next year. So we're going to continue to work on that. We're also working with our local businesses and making sure that as construction goes on, we're making sure everyone knows they're open. We know that construction impacts everyone in the area, so we're actually doing one-on-one meetings with them, reaching out to them, making sure that we're addressing their concerns. We've also been working with the local residents. We had coffee with the creek team, which just occurred. There was a really good showing at that, and I was, I was happy to address a lot of the resident concerns. At the end of it, I think everyone walked away being a bit more informed and feeling like they had, had been heard about their particular issues, and we walked through the why, which I think was very valuable to that as well. So that's kind of where we've been with the creek and what we're forging ahead on. We still struggle with third-party delays, and we're going to continue to work through those issues so we can try to get this done as expeditiously as possible.
Okay, and people can still sign up on our website at sand-markos.net to get and sign up for alerts, and they can still get alerts, and they can find out about the latest of what's happening with that project at all times.
Absolutely.
Okay. And we do, how often do we do updates on that? Do you know off the top of your head?
Weekly.
Weekly, okay. So if you're wondering at home when that's going to happen, you could sign up for the actual alerts, and they will update you weekly. Okay, council commentary. Do we have any commentary this evening? No? Be careful. Oh, there is a cool zone, I think, at the library. It's been quite hot, it's supposed to be, I think, 90 degrees on Friday, so if you don't want to use your air conditioning, you can go to the county library right here next to City Hall and the community center, and you can stay cool. And anything else? Okay, all right, well, with that, this meeting is adjourned.